Well, I think all people on there.
We'll call it tonight's meeting with the Black City Council. I'll bring to your attention that we have a revised agenda under Resolution, under C, Resolution 2016-3 unfit structure and extension. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote please?
Bob Richard?
Yes.
Kent Miller?
Yes.
Rick Brown?
Yes.
Tony Gengler?
Yes.
Matt Adi?
Here.
Lloyd Latrell?
Present.
Robert Peterson?
Present.
If you'll join me for the invocation. And a pleasure to be here. Heavenly Father, thank you for the holidays that we just went through and the birth of our son, Jesus Christ. So we always get to celebrate that. And the fact that everybody got to travel to and from and no accidents. That always happens when you have your hand on our community and our nation. We look for your guidance in keeping our community safe and our country and as always our law enforcement and our armed services as they protect us here and around the world. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Peterson, do you have anything at this time?
The only thing I've got to say is I want to thank the people who come to the BSW Christmas dinner. We served over 300 people enjoying work with them.
That's a nice crowd. It's nice to enjoy and ladies to do that for the community. Tony?
Just to tell a lot of family and the family, we'll do the holidays here. Good deal.
That's good.
I want to thank each of these comrades for all they do. It's a great deal to do it. Post that.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
How good's Tom?
Ten. Mr. Allen?
No.
No, thank you. Pardon? No, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, all the time.
Not a problem. I'm a tough guy. That's my excuse. Anyway, Katie?
I have some stuff, but I'll wait till the work session.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Just one thing to bring to your attention. KDOT does have a new bid letting for the Cape Working Project. That'll be February 17th. Middle of next month, we bidding that project that we re-bid. We rejected those bids last year when it came in too hot. So, it's only on?
Okay.
February 14?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
I'm not sure what time yet. They just announced it on the seventeenth.
We have no public comments this evening. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda with the council meeting minutes from December the fifteenth, special meeting minutes, December the 22nd, and appropriations 1A. It's been moved by Councilman Brown that we approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Latrell. Any further discussion?
I wouldn't have the special meeting, but I'd go along with the rest.
Okay. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Gengler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Thank you. We have no ordinances this evening, but we do have some resolutions. First resolution this evening is Resolutions 2016-1 declaring it advisable to issue general obligation refunding bonds. Comments for staff? No questions? No questions? Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Brown?
Yes.
Gengler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Thank you. We have no ordinances this evening, but we do have some resolutions. First resolution this evening is Resolutions 2016-1 declaring it advisable to issue general obligation refunding bonds. Comments for staff? No questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can you explain what the difference is between the two different types of funding here? The one we're trying to leave and the one that you're going to?
This is my-
Like utility bonds compared to general obligation?
Right, yeah. The electric utilities are a revenue bond, which we did under when we actually did the initial, that was back, what, four or five years ago now, we did that. General obligation bonds are basically just that. They're a general obligation, not tied to the electric or any particular source of revenue. And they, basically they get a lower interest rate is what they do, because the investors will look on that as, I guess, more stable or whatever. And so that's partly the reason why we get a lower interest rate on that. It's still being paid the same way with the electric rates. We're just moving it from revenue bond to a GO bond.
Does it say that in there somewhere? That we're going to pay it the same way? Because otherwise it could be tax minded.
Well, it always, it always could have been that. I mean, if you, if you did not be the revenue from, I mean, that's always your fallback position. So-
I thought you had a guaranteed revenue from the utility.
Well, you do. So, and that doesn't change. But the fault, I mean, if there's a total disaster, so you were wiped out, there's some kind of storm or something like that, your fallback position always is your, your general taxation. It is out of any deficit the city or apparently anybody issues. That's, that's where that goes. So, I mean, it's, it's called something different, but the mechanism we're paying it back is still the same. You're still paying it through the, through the utility.
Mandy, do you have a question?
My question, this, if we pass this, that means that we're going to make it okay for somebody to go out and give us a quote and then we'll vote on whatever the final rate is that they give us, right? This isn't the, the final vote for the refund?
It is, yeah. It is, yeah. This, we talked about in the, in the exit of session, yeah. So this is it. So, no, you'll get that rate and all of that. So, and I think, as we talked about it last time, you know, the savings is about $25,000 per year over to life. The existing bond issue out there, which I think equated to about $280,000.
Any other questions for staff? No questions? I entertain a motion to pass Resolution 2016-1. Been moved by Councilman Richard that we adopt Resolution 2016-1 declaring it advisable to issue general obligation refunding bonds. It was seconded by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Latrell?
I'm going to vote no.
Richard?
Yes.
Gengler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is Resolution 2016-2 authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds.
Are you saying? Then, Paul?
Any questions for staff?
These are the same bonds, correct?
Yeah, the one, the first resolution is declaring that it's advisable to do, the second one is actually authorizing the sale of it. It's just executing that.
Any other questions? Been moved by Councilman Miller that we adopt Resolution 2016-2 authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds. Second by Councilman Adi. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Mandy, would you please take a roll call vote?
Richard?
Yes.
Gengler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is Resolution 2016-3 unfit structure extension. It's been moved by Councilman Brown that we adopt Resolution 2016-3 unfit structure extension by the second, seconded by Councilman Peterson. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Tony?
You've contacted Bosson with this?
I've not, no. No. He had argued with, or he had discussed with the council that he needed more time, he was going to take this, get this done during the spring. So, we have not yet talked to Mr. Bosson about that, no.
I, I, Mandy did send him a letter that said we would be working on an extension, and so that's what this is. I asked it on there May 1st.
Yeah, in section two.
I've seen that, has he? I mean, I feel we kind of did him wrong. So, I mean, I would, we need to go after, let's go after, but I mean, if he needs a June date or something, I would rather do that. Is, is he comfortable with being able to complete it by May 1st? There's my question. Does anybody have that answer? That he is comfortable to have this completed by May 1st?
In my opinion, he can always come to you guys again and ask for another extension if he would like. I, I mean, I think we're usually pretty open to, you know, if he's halfway done or something.
Because I know he said that he was going to be starting in on early spring.
Right, which I figured March, I mean, it's going to take maybe a week or two to take it down, so.
I mean, I would, I mean.
I think if he runs out of time, if he doesn't quite get there, he can get an extension. It'd be comfortable for Chris.
It just takes another resolu-, it just takes another resolution for me.
If we don't pass this, when is?
It's 30 days from publication of the last one, so, a couple of weeks.
So, it would be the right thing to do for him to pass this?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Okay, I mean, I just, I just didn't want to shorten his leash here, but we treated him the way we did the last time. I'd like him to, like him to have every opportunity and work with him as the way we did the last time.
And I can't, I obviously can't speak for the new council, but coming on in April, but I mean, I think we're always willing to work with people if they're willing to work with us. It's very exciting to work with.
All right, very good. Thank you, thank you.
Any further questions? Mandy, would you take a roll?
Chris, would you go down and explain this to him if he doesn't quite get where he is at that date and time?
Sure, be glad to.
That he could come to the council and get extension?
Yeah, be glad to.
Okay, I think I have.
Thank you, Mandy. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Miller?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Gengler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening, under formal actions, is the police radios. And I think these are radios that are mounted in the car, not handhelds, right? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
And the amount is $17,000 from Motorola Solutions for the police department and to be financed through Solomon Valley Bank at a fixed rate of two and a quarter percent for three years. Pardon? It's been moved by Councilman Latrell that we approve the purchase of the police radios from next, I have a second. Seconded by Councilman Peterson. Any further discussion? No further discussion, if the favors say aye? Opposed, same. Motion carries.
I just wanted to ask, Scotty, your thing you got on your, you know, does that work through your car or is it by itself?
It's, it's by itself. These radios will be mounted in the car, it'll be the same type, 800 megahertz radio. It's a communication and officer safety issue. This way it also, with an in-car radio, it'll also allow us to turn these off and won't drain the battery. Then when we get out of the car, we'll turn them on so we can, we can hear that.
Do these give you plenty of signal to?
Yeah, there's a few dead spots in town.
Yeah.
But not very many.
Okay, well, I just wasn't sure how.
But the, the in-car radio will have more, will be, be more range on it.
Well, it makes sense to you, yeah.
Okay. Next item on formal action is the high pressure washer bid for a hot seat, hot pressure washer from Professional Cleaning Systems Incorporated for $6,095. Any questions for staff? Bob?
Are we going to vote on that radio?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't want to vote on radio.
I think you did.
Yeah, let me get back.
I think you did.
Those in favor? Opposed? Now we-
Yeah, we did.
You only get one.
You get one, bro.
Should put something else in there. You could have something else. Okay. Now, high pressure washer from Professional Cleaning Systems and the amount is $6,095. I think this was a lower bid than what they originally received.
Yeah, it is.
We do business with the same company and their service is really, it's excellent. They have good follow-through, so, good place to purchase things.
Where are they cleaning up? What's the, what's the bid for? What, why do we need this?
I think we're replacing one that's, I can't remember how old it was.
It was a '91, but we bought it in '97.
It's upgrading more.
This is going to be between departments, right, Ron?
Yes, the sewer, water, and electric systems.
It's been moved by Councilman Miller that we approve the purchase of the high pressure washer from Professional Cleaning Systems and the amount is $6,095. I have a second. Seconded by Councilman Richard. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Carries. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. It's been moved by Councilman Brown that we adjourn by the second. Seconded by Councilman Latrell. Any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same. We're adjourned. We'll go into the work session. Katie, do you have one address us at this time?
Yeah, I've got several things left. Need to update you guys on, what I'm working on. First and foremost, just so if you should hear anything or maybe read SVD minutes or something like that, we are working on streets in the business park. There is a small portion of land directly west of where Bedcur's building, that building, in the business park that the SVD will be dedicating to the city as a street. It will be called Andy Manifold Street. So that will be done by first a deed, obviously, to the city, and then we're actually doing ordinance opening, formally opening that as a street.
So they're wanting to connect the business park to the north campus?
No, this is just a really small section that will connect to Willow Springs Way. So you can turn off Willow Springs Way onto Andy Manifold, right, that, that big Bedcur's building. None of this will connect to our campus.
So it's basically just a driveway connecting?
Yeah. But in doing some of that research of that area up there, I found that Willow Springs Way has actually never been dedicated as a city street. And in order to have a city street, we have to have an ordinance to formally open it as a public right of way. That was always the intent. I can go back to the original drawings from when SVD acquired that land, and it's in there as a proposed right of way. Paperwork just never got done. So, that's going to take a little bit of time because I need a legal description from Chauvin, but it will be the same process. SVD will deed the city that 60-foot strip where that street is right now. So, that's in the works. Doesn't seem too crazy important about that, but if it is important, then we, you know, get those streets opened up legally. Otherwise, they're not public right of ways. City Code. City Code Financial is a company that we're using to, for our codification process. They've been excellent to work with. In October, they sent me the code book you see there, the draft code book, and since then, their attorney and I have been going through section by section and making changes. If any of you are interested or want to go online, I can give you the link. All of this is online. Obviously, you guys haven't adopted the new code, so I don't want to give it, give it out to the public, but I can give it to you guys so you can go on and look at, and see how the page is going to look online. It is very easy to navigate, and it's nice to be able to look up all the codes, just clicking the mouse rather than digging through the book. Just to go through kind of how this would work, you all will get code books. Obviously, we'll have code books on record here in the city, but it will be updated immediately online. So as you continue to pass the ordinance, we send that to City Code, they immediately update our code online, and then annually, they will send us supplements for our books. So, right now, my office has an old 1986 book that's never been updated. So, this will be nice, because we'll have something constantly that's current with what we're working with. And being that we haven't done this since 1986, there are lots and lots of problems with our code. So that's where we're going to go through that. And what I'm going to focus on tonight is, there's a lot of little things that I was able to go on and, and just tweak and tell him, you know, change a word here, change a paragraph here. If he, maybe one of those specifics I can give to you, they're very minor. But the important things are the charter ordinances that the city has adopted over the years that are just basically out of date. And what charter ordinances are, are ordinances that when the city does something that's different than state statute, we use home rule power to adopt charter ordinance and make changes. So there was a few things that Larry had suggested that we need to update, which I agreed, because they were old. They have to do with payment to council members. It's really old, the one that's in there. They have to do with appointment of city officials. And then we have, of course, our election ordinance that the, the city, or excuse me, the state passed a statute last year that has, we have to move the follow-up actions. So what I've done, and I'll pass this out, is put all of those changes, because they all have to do with the council, how the council's elected, how we appoint officers, things like that, lump them all into one new charter ordinance, which makes some changes to some previous charter ordinances. But I don't want to overwhelm you, but I wanted to give you this tonight so you have a couple of weeks to go over all this. What I did is I, I kind of put little comments under each section of the new charter ordinance so that you could see what, what each section actually does. So I'm just going to run through that pretty quickly, because again, you have, none of this will be done until next meeting. But what I've given you is the charter ordinance, and then I've attached the old charter ordinances that we're either amending or repealing, and then also the state statutes that we are exempting out of, basically, we're making them not applicable to our city. So those are on here also. So you should have everything here and not have to go looking for what we're doing. But my highlights didn't show up very well when I copied these, but little comments under each section are supposed to be highlighted. So what we're doing, section two is very basic, just outlining, you know, how our mayor, council member structure is, and replaces 14-103, which is a statute that outlines wards and things like that. You guys have established your wards through ordinary ordinance, which you're allowed to do. So I've set, set that out in section two. Sections three and four are the new fall election law. Obviously, the important thing there is to note that those whose terms expire in April 2016 will expire in April 2016. And those that are elected this year in April will actually have a three-year, nine-month term, will go through January of 2020. And that has to be shortened again, just so we can get in line with the fall elections. The first fall election will be November 2017. So, those elected in April 2016 will go to January 2020. Those elect, or, excuse me, those of you that are currently supposed to expire in April of 2018, you now will only actually go to January 2018, so that we can have an election in November of 2017. Does that kind of make sense? The reason we do that is so we can get on a fall odd-year election cycle. So rather than have very long terms-
You're shortening the terms just a little bit.
Shortening, just, just slightly. And then after that, we go back to our four-year terms. But this is necessary just to come into, to align with what the statute says. So that's what three and four are. Section five is already, is already a charter ordinance that we have. It just says that's your term limits. The reason I put it in here is because it's one section of Charter Ordinance 10, and I'm eliminating the rest of Charter Ordinance 10. So, I just put this in here so we can get rid of all number 10. Does that make sense? Yes?
If it's, I'm confused about the, if your, if your office expires in April 2018, the election is in November 2018.
2017.
We have, that would be a three-year difference. I mean, that would be a-
No, you, the elections are held in, in November of odd years, because you don't take office until January the following year. So, we will have an election in November of 2017 for those who are supposed to expire in April 2018. They will now expire in January of 2018. So it's similar to-
So we will be on the, about the same time as all the, other day elections are going on?
No, and that's, I believe, the purpose behind-
That's what they said, yeah. Because originally it was, the way they changed it, was going to be during the general election, but then they switched that to the odd years to avoid that, which-
Why? None of this makes a lot-
Supposed to be so he could save money with less election.
Right.
And actually, there'll be more elections. Because, especially for the next two years, because cities can basically, as you can, as you can tell, we can do this a number of different ways, so there are cities doing this all different ways. So the county here may have to do several different before we can all get on the same cycle for five years from now. So, yeah, it's, not a lot of reasoning behind it, but it's mandated that we do this, so we're doing it. Section five is something we already have in place, again, just kind of cleaning things up, so that's why it's in here. Section six, filling vacancies is, was also a part of that new law that was passed last year. The language that they passed, which is attached here, is extremely, it conflicts with a lot of current statutes. They, they passed a new law, but forgot to repeal basically everything that it conflicts with. So, the League of Kansas Municipalities is, because of that confusion and those conflicts, is recommending that all cities exempt out of that new law that was passed regarding airing body vacancies. So what you have here is 14-204, which is what we already do. And so you're exempting out of 12-104A. So not anything really, we're not changing anything of how we fill vacancies. It's majority vote is how we do it. But it's important that we exempt out of.
How, how can we exempt that of certain laws and not others?
If they're not, if they don't apply uniformly to all cities, then we can't. And most of these don't, because we have first, second, third class, so they have-
So we can exempt out of both things?
That's the one, the election law, the, the fall elections is one that they said you cannot exempt out of, and they mandated that cities pass an ordinance to come into. They don't usually do that.
Can't get out of?
No. They, they didn't forget that one. Section six has to do with appointments, and you'll see in those charter ordinances They're just out of date. They, for example, Charter Ordinance two has you guys, or has the mayor appointing judge, chief of police, city clerk, city treasurer, city attorney, and policeman. Well, really, that doesn't, that's not how we do things. We appoint a city judge, a city attorney, a city engineer, and then a couple other officers, but city clerk, chief of police are employees at will. They are not. So that's, that clarifies how we do appointments here.
Yeah, two section sixes.
Do I?[1770.12] Do I? Yeah, sure do. Thank you. I will remember those. So, yes, I'm talking about the second section six. Thank you for giving me... For everything, but... Section seven, for some reason, there was a charter ordinance passed which talks about appointing a city administrator. That's not, and for, it's not really how we handle our city administrator. He's, he's an employee at will. He doesn't get appointed yearly like the city attorney or the city judge. So, I just took all of that out. We have ordinances which establish the city, or, excuse me, the city administrative position. I don't know why that was a charter ordinance, so I'm just getting rid of it. Because we do already have, and I have a number of their ordinances in place, which establish our city administrative position, establish how one is hired and describes their job duties, which, as we go through this next few months, we may want to look at that and see if we need to amend those job duties at all, but...